Check one, two.
Mary, we have most of the county here. Who's running the place?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was asking the same question.
And it speaks to the importance of this short meeting on a call purpose on the eve of the Fourth of July. We can bless our great nation. I would like you all, in that spirit, to thank the Lord and also pledge to our great country. Mrs. Snodgrass will lead us in the pledge and an invocation. Sir, please stand.
Ms. Pry? Father, we thank you for, Lord, this day, and, Lord, even on a day where it's a little dreary and raining outside, Lord, we're thankful for that, Lord, because rain reminds us of your provision and your faithfulness to us. So, Lord, we pray that you continue to be with us. Lord, we echo the words of Solomon, who asked for wisdom in terms of governing your people. And so, Lord, we ask you for wisdom. Lord, we thank you for this nation that we live in, that we can freely assemble together and to speak about the issues and to govern ourselves in the manner in which we do. We thank you for this freedom, this weekend of the Fourth, in which we recognize and we take time to remember that freedom, those who sacrificed to get us and to put us in the place that we are today. Help us never to take that freedom for granted. Help us to always be mindful, to be stewards of this freedom for future generations. We love you. Pray this name. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much indeed. We'll get right down to business. Our purpose is to hear an update as requested by Mr. Carpenter in his memorandum to be dated yesterday. And when that is accomplished, we will adjourn. It's on page, his request is on page two of the letter he sent us this yesterday. And here we are on the second day of a new fiscal year, and we need to hear what Vic has to say. Thank you all, and you as well, and those calling in for taking the time to learn how we're going to execute the budget we approved for fiscal year 22 under what may be or may not be potentially changed conditions. So why did I agree to Mr. Carpenter's request on page two of his letter that you all have? Well, number one, it's a statewide matter. No county and no fire department in this state is unaffected, potentially. And I keep using words like that because we don't know. Number two, there is too much we don't know, and the council needs to hear what we intend to do in the meantime. Thirdly, Supreme Court issued a narrow decision for a particular case in another county, and not for us, and not for statewide. But given the statewide nature, potentially, that word again resulting from the Supreme Court, this is clearly a General Assembly issue. It has its roots in 1999 in this county alone. No telling where, what the other counties have done. And it is exacerbated by the inequities in a General Assembly law called Act 388. It is a core function of the Assembly to address this issue, and we know that the Assembly and the state are well-led. They are fully aware of the issue, and so is the South Carolina Association of Counties. And believe me, we've all been talking. And so has the fire department, people throughout the state. What a great team of volunteers and professional firefighters. It is a core function, and that act places restrictions on how we as counties raise funds to carry out those essential duties that they have directed that we would do. So that's the issue. For now, we must consider that the ruling could apply, and could apply to Chief you, Chris, in Lugol Fire Department as well. So we need to respond to a signal that it sends, and I'm frankly grateful for the time that we have now to assess. And that's our business today. Mr. Carpenter will analyze in due time and report back to us and review what actions we need to take. In six months, the General Assembly will be able to meet, and we have no doubt that they will act to resolve these potential issues. We have every faith also in the leadership of this county, especially under Mr. Carpenter and the rest of his team, and by our attorneys who are present today. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Now, there's some rules here. We are a call meeting, and council rules apply. We have a quorum. This is informational and not decisional, so there will be no votes, and we'll not reopen old issues such as the budget that we have just voted in June. We have call-ins, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Conell, and Mr. Gardner. And Mary, I'll take comments from them as they call in, as we normally do. And there will be no votes. When Mr. Carpenter is satisfied, he has covered the topics in the letter, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll begin the discussion with a motion. Mr. Jones will follow our rules. So with that, Mr. Tucker, can we have a motion to hear from Mr. Carpenter?
You want to do the most to adopt the agenda first?
Yeah, let's first adopt the agenda.
Okay, most to adopt the agenda.
Can we have a second?
Second.
From Mr. Snodgrass, discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Jimmy, please. This is a good time to talk.
It is. Thank you for recognizing me. I have a point of interest. You said that this discussion would not be talking about the budget that we just passed. Maybe I misunderstood.
It's going to be on the item on the agenda.
Which, which is?
The Supreme Court ruling on fees.
Right, but we're not going to talk about the fees we just created.
We'll see. We'll see in the context of Mr. Carpenter's letter.
Well, that would be part of the budget, is what I'm saying. But when you say we're not going to discuss anything that was dealing with the budget, this is dealing with the budget. The fees we just passed, this county council just passed, is dealing with the budget. So I think it's a little disingenuous to say, and I don't mean to be rude when I say it, but...
Go ahead, please.
But I think it's a little disingenuous to sit here and say we have a call meeting, we're going to hear from Mr. Carpenter, but we're not going to discuss anything about the budget. Well, we just passed a budget with some huge fee increases, and that needs to be discussed.
So do you want to make a motion to amend the agenda? So do you want to make a motion to amend the agenda? Or do you want to have that?
I'm going to discuss every item dealing with fees today, just to talk about it. Let's get some clarification.
Okay, but we'll talk about the item on the agenda. So let's move to a vote on the items on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Let's hear first from Mr. Brazel. How do you vote?
You're deliberately ignoring me and letting me finish what I have to say.
Mr. Brazel, how do you vote? In favor of the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Conell, in favor of the agenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Okay. And all those present with the agenda as in the call meeting on the piece of paper you have. All those in favor signify. And that shows Mr. Snodgrass, Mr... Excuse me. Mr. Tucker, Mr. Burns. Those opposed to the agenda is Mr. Jones.
I got no clarification on the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I must say, I voted against it because I don't have any clarification on our discussion.
Well, we'll get the clarification on the next item, Jimmy, if you look at the agenda. Now, with that, Mr. Tucker, can we have a motion to hear from Mr. Carpenter on the Supreme Court ruling as included in his letter?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I need new business for Mr. Carpenter to give us to address his memo from the ruling from the Supreme Court fees.
A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass, discussion. Mr. Brazel, you have any discussion?
Not as of yet, no sir.
Okay. And Mr. Conell, any discussion before we move into the briefing?
Yeah, I'm just ready to hear the update.
Yep. And from Mr. Gardner?
Not at this time.
Okay. And all those in favor of the motion signify, first of all, by Mr. Brazel. This is going to be a little convoluted. Mr. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Conell?
Yes.
And Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
And those present signify. And, Mary, it's unanimous. And we move into the briefing by Mr. Carpenter. Please, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, yesterday I submitted to you a memo that called to your attention a ruling that the South Carolina Supreme Court had issued on the afternoon of Wednesday, June 30. The gist of that decision was to invalidate a specific ordinance in Greenville County, two specific ordinances, one that affected a road maintenance fee and one that affected what they called a telecommunications fee. The issue that raised the concern is the one related to the road maintenance fee, as Kershaw County also has a road maintenance fee in effect. The ruling focused on really one main, main issue. And the issue is whether it was a fee or whether it was a tax. South Carolina law is very specific, related to taxes, and taxes that may be implemented by local governments. The only taxes that may be implemented by local governments are those that have already been approved by the General Assembly. Fees are limited to being uniform service fees that are focused on particular individuals in the community receiving a particular benefit from the fee. The benefit from the fee is something that can only pertain to that class. It cannot be for the general benefit of everybody in the community that pays the fee. So the distinction whether it was a fee or a tax is what the Supreme Court focused on. And their conclusion in this case was that in Greenville County, the road maintenance fee was paid for by a specific class, which was the everybody who owned a car in Greenville County. But it was the benefit of everybody who came to the county. So that made it a tax, because a tax is paid by everybody for the benefit of everybody. A fee is paid by a few for the benefit of those few. So it came down to the crux of the roads are used by everybody, and it would be impossible to fee everybody who use the road. Therefore, by definition, it was a tax and not a fee. And that therefore invalidated that fee as such, under state law. So the concern in Kershaw and pretty much every county in the state as a result of this is what does that mean for fees that we have in effect? Staff, legal staff, county staff, with support of the South Carolina Association of Counties are reviewing these rulings to see how they will impact Kershaw County. Obviously, every county is doing the same thing. At this point, we cannot tell you how they will impact Kershaw County for a couple reasons. Number one, this ruling only affects Greenville County. It's very limited in nature. So 45 counties are not affected by this ruling, number one. And number two, it is a ruling that is based on the conclusion that the General Assembly has not approved this tax. Therefore, the General Assembly ultimately is the entity that created the law, and the General Assembly is the entity that ultimately can resolve the law. They will not come into session until January. So our ability to really determine the impact will not be final until the General Assembly has met and they have made a decision. If they decide that they will legitimize this fee, so to speak, then it does not affect us at all. If they conclude that they will not, then it will affect us. Therefore, this is an issue that will be of significance to us in the next budget cycle. Either it will have gone away, because the General Assembly will have passed the necessary language to approve this fee or tax as such, or we will have to replace it in our new budget coming forward. In Kershaw County, we do have three fees in effect. We have a fire fee, which is on every approved parcel in the county. We have a fire vehicle fee, which is on vehicles registered in the county. And we have a road maintenance fee. The road maintenance fee in Kershaw County was first implemented in 1999. So that's before anybody in this room, well, most of the people in this room, were in the offices they're currently holding. Some people in this room were working for the county at that point. So it predates all of us as far as implementation of that road maintenance fee. The initial take from looking at the fees we have, and I'm sorry, and the solid waste fee, we also have a solid waste fee, are as follows. The solid waste fee is a fee paid by every homeowner in this county, everybody who lives in a dwelling, and it only benefits them. Businesses do not pay, they do not receive a benefit from it. Industry does not pay, they do not receive a benefit from it. Out-of-town citizens do not pay, they do not receive a benefit from it. Only our citizens pay the fee, and only our citizens receive the benefit from it. So on the surface, it appears our solid waste fee is a fee that would pass muster. Our fire fee on improved dwellings, only people who have an improved structure on their property pay the fire fee. The fire service only responds to fires at structures. They do not go out of county. They are not, or they're not expected to go out of county. So a fire in Richland County is not expected to be served by Kershaw County firemen. So in all likelihood, again, that same test would hold, that only the people who pay the fire fee would receive the benefit from it. Perhaps the vehicle fee is one that we would need to look at going forward, because that one falls more into the category of the road maintenance fee, where vehicles are paying it, and on the context that firefighters respond to vehicles when they wreck or when they have accidents that cause the potential to fire. But that would apply to anybody. So that becomes a fee that there would be some interest in looking at. The reality of it is, if the General Assembly, we already have in front of the General Assembly a request, it made it through the Senate to a second reading, S-401, which would give counties such as Kershaw the ability to replace the fee with a one-time reset of mileage. If that were to pass, then that would resolve that issue totally, and the fees would go away. If the General Assembly were to meet and determine that the vehicle maintenance fee was, in fact, a legitimate tax that they approved of, then that would now be legally covered as well. So the sum of our potential impact is, again, that we're going to have to wait till January to truly know what our impact will be, what the impact will be on the citizens of this county. But for now, we anticipate that the General Assembly, based on what we have been told and others across the state have been told, that the General Assembly will address this as an issue. And how they determine to address it is, of course, up to them in doing so. Now, as part of my notification to you, I indicated that I'm prepared to act accordingly. If it is determined at some point that the county needs to do something to look at replacing that revenue, I've spelled out various steps that I'm prepared to take. These are steps that I hold in abeyance in most cases at the moment, until such time is determined that they're needed to be done. Department heads have all been notified, however, to be prepared. Employees, therefore, notified to be prepared that should we need to take action, that we will take the necessary actions, which will include finding other sources of revenue, which will include cutting of expenses through a variety of mechanisms as well. So nothing would be off the table, and nothing would be off the board in making such a decision. But at this point, it's premature to go ahead and implement anything other than trying to determine other sources of revenue that we could find to replace this revenue should it be lost. So in some members of council, this is an issue which is of concern. It is an issue the council needs to be aware of, which is why I requested your time today. I'm very protective of your time, but this is something that I felt warranted you coming together, having the ability to ask questions and to understand as a body what the potential impact was for us. Now, I will point out that as part of the ruling, there was no requirement that Greenville County pay back any fees. And so at this point, that would set a precedent that future determinations would probably not include that as well. So it'd be just a case of fixing going forward, should it be determined to be implemented in a county such as Kershaw County. With that, Mr. Chairman, those are the basics. We'll turn it back to you.
That's perfect. And we're going to follow the electronic roll, but you neglected to mention item two on page two.
I'm sorry? Okay. Which was... Oh, yeah. In choosing not to, I've chosen to go forward and still implement the pay raises the council had approved for all employees.
Good.
So that is something that I have chosen to continue with.
Okay, so we need to correct that.
Okay. And then you mentioned other sources, and you're further down in your paragraph, you mentioned ARPA, and we'll see later on, as you continue this extensive assessment that you and our attorneys are going to do. With that, I think we go to our protocol and hear first from you, Russell. Can you, do you have any questions or comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions, because I think we've still got a lot to learn. We've got a lot to kind of wait and see what happens. But as long as we're able to act nimbly and adjust, I don't see any real need for fret at this point. So I'm thankful to be informed. Thank you.
All right, Ben, I don't know where in the world you are, but let's hear from you, Mr. Conell.
Hiding in the woods. No questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, excellent briefing. Number three would be Mr. Gardner, and then we'll go to those present.
Yeah, I would agree with... I think it's premature for us to do anything. I think Mr. Carpenter has his hand on the pulse of it, and I trust what he does. And I think we're good to go.
Thank you. Comments from here? Anybody? Mr. Jones, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass. Go ahead, David.
Question. So the road maintenance fee, what does that go towards?
The road maintenance fee is what we use to operate the Public Works Department, which is our Roads and Bridges Department. So a significant portion of the road maintenance budget goes to scraping dirt roads.
Correct.
And maintaining the roads, as well as the bridges the county owns.
Good. And just, for those of you who are new here, I know the answer to these questions, but I think it's good to ask these questions, just for public record, that we can kind of understand the full scope. So as far as a state road that someone has an issue with, we don't collect that fee for that. This fee is collected specifically for a county road.
Correct.
The majority, what's the majority of the, what type of roads do we have in our county, like the majority of them?
Dirt roads.
Dirt roads. So there probably wouldn't be vast thoroughfares where tourists and people are passing through. Mostly it's...
In most, yes, sir.
Mostly it's that user of that fee that is using the bulk of that road?
Yes, sir. The vast majority of the paved roads we have are inside subdivisions. They're just internal roads for residents.
Okay. And Mr. DeBose, so am I reading this correctly, that really this comes down to like 1997, right? Because Brown versus Ori County had addressed this previous, but now it's because of the updated in 1997 is kind of where Supreme Court fell, as far as their decision?
Yes, they base it on a law, I believe, that was passed and became effective in 1997.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carpenter, I just want to say that I appreciate you getting ahead of this and giving us an outline. I have full trust and belief in you that you handled this, as you've handled any other situation that's come upon this county, with due diligence and keeping us informed and was looking at some of the cuts and things. But I do appreciate item number two on page two, that you reconsidered that. That means a lot to your employees and to the citizens of Kershaw County. So I thank you for your outlook on how to handle this, and most of all, for your reconsideration on item number two.
Mr. Jones, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Haven't heard much from the county attorney. Mr. DeBose, can I ask you, please, to go to the last page of the Supreme Court's information? Justice Kittredge? See where we're at?
Yes.
Like, would you mind, where it starts with local governments for obvious reasons, would you mind just reading that paragraph for me and giving me your opinion on that, please?
Well, first, this is a concurrence by Justice Kittredge. It's not the opinion. It's just his concurrence. So, but the last paragraph basically says that, if you want me to read it, I will.
I do.
Says, the whole last paragraph or just the last portion of it?
The last portion of it.
Okay.
Local government.
Yeah. Well, he says, "I am hopeful that today's decision will deter the politically expedient penchant for imposing taxes disguised as service or user fees. I believe today's decision sends a clear message that the courts will not uphold taxes masquerading as service or user fees. Going forward, courts will carefully scrutinize so-called service or user fees to ensure compliance with Section 61-300 subsection 6."
Thank you. What do you, your opinion out of what you just read?
Well, that's a concurrence of Kittredge, who incidentally joined in the decision. And as Mr. Carpenter says, the decision says that two fees enacted by Greenville County, two different ones, are taxes, not service charges. So he is just basically concurring with that, but writing a different one when he opines that, him, he's just writing for himself now, that courts will carefully scrutinize these service user fees. But he did join in the major opinion, which basically just invalidated the two Greenville County fees.
Got you. Got it. Of course, the first sentence where I said, "local governments," you didn't read that. I will. Local governments, for obvious reasons, want to avoid calling a tax a tax. If I can, just for a moment, and thank y'all for bearing with me. You know, it is of my thinking, of my thoughts. South Carolina Supreme Court has found that Greenville County road maintenance fee on vehicles in Greenville County is illegal. The court order says counties are imposing taxes disguised as fees. And I have said for 15 years, sitting here, that a fee is nothing but a tax in disguise. I have said that time and time and time after again. That's why I didn't support the funding mechanism of moving forward in this current budget that we just passed. I've also said, and I'm going to restate, that it hits 65 years, folks and older, harder than anybody else. A fee does. You know, and when you look at the fees that we have here, if you take, and I've said this before, $100,000 house, the taxes on it for 65 and older is $97 roughly a month. Figured they got maybe two cars, just an average. And the fee's $230 a year. I'm sorry, this is minimum, a year. So for those, and those brackets are paying more fees than there are taxes. And if you take a $200,000 house for 65 and older, you're looking at maybe around $300 in taxes and $230 in fees. So you almost got as much fees as you do taxes there. You know, it boils down to what I've said time and time and time again. A fee is nothing but a tax in disguise. And these disguised taxes imposed as fees by Kershaw County, I believe, in my opinion, are not right. They hurt people, most of all, who are on fixed incomes and can... They hurt people, most of all, who are on fixed incomes and cannot afford to pay it. And I truly believe we need to repeal any tax that's disguised as fees, and this is how I feel. I want to end on this note, too. You know, I've taken some, I've been personally attacked by certain members of this county council when it comes to my position on fees and taxes, and I've been told that I was a negative force for this county moving forward because I would oppose a fee, which I thought was not proper, not legal. And I have a personal attack, nobody on this council, I just ask questions and I state my opinion, I stand by my belief, and I'm not going to change that for anybody, and I'm not going to be intimidated by anybody. But I think that we do have a situation with our current budget, that, you know, we have implemented these fees, we've increased $10 per vehicle. I do think, though, I do agree with this, and this is just my opinion, you know, you would think that when the Supreme Court justice wrote this, you'd think I was talking, because what they said was exactly what I've been saying. Maybe I should be on the Supreme Court.
Justice Jones, I didn't know that.
But anyway, but anyway, I have no interest in it because I'm not ladder climbing, I'm staying right where I'm at. But you know, we know what's going to happen. Let me get back to what I was saying a while ago. I do agree on the thought that, you take Lugol Fire, for example, they've got a $25 fee, chief, is that what it is? Twenty, twenty...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three dollar fee. And, you know, we have our road maintenance fee, but I feel that because their fee is going to, it pays for the fire trucks they have, if they lost that fee, they would have to absolutely replace it immediately with something, probably have to be millage, because they've got to pay for their fire trucks. We're in a little bit better position with Kershaw County because the fees we just passed, we haven't really spent that money yet. So I guess my question is, Mr. Carpenter, are you kind of planning to kind of just hold off a little bit before we start spending any of the money on the things that we just voted for where the fee is concerned, which everything's kind of up in the air?
We always enter a new year on a cautionary basis. So as a rule, we go slow with buying capital equipment, we go slow with non-critical replacement of employees at the beginning of a budget year. That's just how we've always operated, and you know, that's why we always end the year in a good financial position. So I don't, I'm not going to immediately implement anything more specific than we normally do. What we normally do is what other counties might be considering doing. We're already doing that. We're already going slow on major expenditures and just to make sure that the environment we're in will be conducive to spending that money later. And if it's not, then we won't spend it.
Well, you know, I'm of the opinion, my opinion probably doesn't matter, but I'm of the opinion that, and I don't agree with it, but the solid waste fee is going to probably be okay. I'm of the opinion that the Lugol Fire Department's fee is going to probably be okay. I'm of the opinion that the road maintenance fee is what we really got to watch. So I guess my issue is the monies, the road maintenance fee was going to generate for the projects it was going to pay for, don't you think it'd be kind of wise to just kind of sit back and let's make sure that we can use it for that before we spend it for that?
Well, Ms. Jones, those funds are not used on projects, they're used on the basic salaries of the employees that are out there scraping the roads and driving the trucks. So I have to spend that money.
I understand that, but I'm talking about the new additional $10.
That's different.
That's in fire.
I know, but that's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir. We were not planning on spending that money until January. Anyway, that's when that fee would, that fee is not being collected yet, it won't be collected until starting in January. So that gives us that kind of a time.
You have always acted with, you've always been very cautious, you've watched the money, and I do appreciate that, and I'm not surprised that you just answered it the way you did, I just wanted it out there for the record, because it makes sense. As I said, we may sit here and say, well, we don't know where we stand, but I think, I would, I don't know, I would find it difficult to believe myself that it's going to affect one county only and no other counties in the state. That's just, once again, that's just of my opinion as well. So I guess my question has been answered, that we're going to sit back and just wait and see.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. And our county attorneys, they're all involved?
Exceptionally so.
Okay, all right. At this time, I have no further questions.
With that, Mr. Carpenter, your question's been asked and answered.
Yes, sir. My goal was to ensure that the council was aware of what had happened, what we saw in our current position of the impact on the county and what possible actions I might take. I've addressed all three of those.
I think it was splendid in the way you delivered it and the way you have reached out to other counties. With that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, starting with Mr. Brazel?
No discussion, thank you.
Ben, Mr. Conell?
No, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Gardner?
Nothing, thank you.
And barring any further discussion, my congratulations, I wish you all a happy Fourth of July. I ask the staff, stay safe, and the sheriff, and our fire people and EMS, keep us safe. And with that, we move to a vote, starting with Mr. Brazel.
Point of order. I don't think we were asked if there's any further discussion.
Yeah, I did ask that.
Okay, you did.
Mr. Brazel?
Yes.
I don't think you did.
Mr. Conell, how do you vote?
Yes.
I think you said yes.
You did.
Okay, Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
And all others in favor of adjourned signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous, Mary, and we are adjourned. Happy Fourth of July, happy birthday, America.